Well, good evening. This is Chair Bob Jorgensen. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting, uh, February twenty-third. Twenty twenty-two of the planning commission, we call it to order. Deputy City Clerk Kevin Christian, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Don DeCar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Francis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Commissioner Khan.
Here.
Commissioner Walken.
Here.
Vice Chair Quincy is absent for tonight's meeting. Chair Jorgensen.
Here. Thank you. So let the record reflect that commissioners are present through teleconferencing. I'd like to remind my fellow commissioners and staff to help us reduce background noise by muting your phone or microphone unless you are speaking. And that's probably especially true with the Pledge of Allegiance, which comes now, and Michael Hopkins will lead us.
Thank you, Chair Jorgensen.
See, we can get the flag real quick here.
Oh, yeah.
Just a moment.
It's gotta be unfolded, it's in triangles, takes a little bit.
I had it here, I promise.
Here we go.
All right, great, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate that. So, uh, the first item, um, after the call to order is the public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Uh, Deputy City Clerk, is there any, uh, public comment or anybody with their hand raised to speak?
At this point, I don't see a hand raised. Let me just remind, uh, people in attendance that if they, uh, wish to speak to the commissioner on items not on the agenda, now is the time to speak. You can go ahead and raise your hand. I will recognize you and promote you to, um, a panelist to speak and show your video if you wish. We'll give you just a few more seconds to do so. Again, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Seeing none, Chair, back to you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent item, which is consideration of minutes from the February ninth meeting. Are there any, uh, edits? Uh, from commissioners? Well then, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve. And I second.
Emily seconds. So we have a motion to second. So, uh, Kevin, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Don DeCar.
Yes.
Commissioner Francis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins. Think I heard a yes. Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
Commissioner Walken.
Yes.
Chair Jorgensen.
Yes. Thank you. So now we, uh, move to the one and only public hearing tonight. And, um, as with all our public hearings, I want to be sure that everyone realizes that any court challenge to the action taken in public hearing items on this agenda may be limited to considering only those issues raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city of San Luis Obispo, had or prior to the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. So the first item tonight is, uh, at eleven sixty-six Higera, uh, street at the corner of Higera and Toro Streets. And we have Kyle Bell to give the stamp report.
Yes, hello, me, my camera on.
And Chair Jorgensen, in the meantime, um, I will need to recuse myself tonight, uh, as the applicant is, um, a member of the board of my employer. Thank you.
Thank you. Forgot to call on you. I appreciate that. So we'll see you at the end, I hope. Good, so, uh, Kyle, are you? I s- I see the screen.
There we go. I got it all figured out now. All right, I ready when you are.
Go ahead, you can proceed.
All right, my name is Kyle Bell, I'm an associate planner of the city of San Luis Obispo. Uh, tonight we will be reviewing the redevelopment of an existing commercial property. Include twelve repurposed shipping containers for an outdoor dining experience. Nice recommendation is to find the project consistent. Yeah, uh, this is known as the general plan, we design guidelines and zoning regulations. And to approve the project subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the draft resolution. The project site is located along Higera Street at the intersection of Higera and Toro Streets. The project provides direct access from Higera Streets. Um, the project site is located in the commercial retail zone as part of this downtown core and is currently vacant. Project site is surrounded by retail and off uses to the north and east and restaurant uses to the west, as well as financial services to the south. Uh, on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the R- project review commission reviewed the project for consistency with the key design guidelines. The A R C recommended that the planning commission find the project consistent with the key design guidelines and move the project forward. The proposed project consists of twelve new structures, provides seven tenant suites, free storage rooms, and one bicycle storage locker. Uh, and one, as well as one for restrooms. Uh, the project also includes repurposing of an existing, uh, fourteen hundred square foot single-story structure towards the rear of the lots into a new restaurant suite. Providing a total of four thousand two hundred and eight square feet of commercial space and one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven square feet of outdoor dining. The project has been, um, yeah, the project has been envisioned to be occupied predominantly by restaurant uses. And parking requirements have been designed to address the, uh, highest parking demand for the site um, at a rate of one space per one hundred square feet of restaurant area. Resulting in a parking requirement of forty spaces in accordance with the zoning code. And in accordance to the zoning code, one vehicle space may be reduced for each five additional bicycle spaces provided in excess of required bicycle parking. The applicant is providing, opposing twenty additional bicycle spaces beyond what is required to reduce the vehicle parking, uh, by four spaces, which accounts for ten percent of the requested parking reduction. A parking demand study has been provided to evaluate the peak parking demand of all intended uses to account for the remaining, um, fifty percent parking reduction requests. The parking demand study adjusted for the standard parking demand to account for the modal shift, which is the peak parking demand using a little split rates adjusted to reflect projects' walkability location. A fifty percent of the customers walking or biking to the site. Project provides sixteen parking spaces on site, which is two spaces less than identified in the peak parking demand of eighteen spaces using the modal shift. Uh, in response to the concern related to parking availability, the applicant has provided a draft management and production plan. Provides an incentive program to encourage alternative modes of transportation for customers and employers. Uh, sorry, customers and employees. Uh, the plan includes incentives such as information boltens, um, back and forth threat club, um, customer accounts, ride share and carpool opportunities, as well as bike ballet. Staff has evaluated the parking demand study and recommends support of the proposed parking reduction with inclusion of the trip management and reduction plan to address the deficiency of the two parking spaces. And this actually concludes the SaaS presentation, available for any questions.
So are there questions of Kyle from the commission?
I have a few questions, Chair Jorgensen.
Chair, please, Mike.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, questions for staff. Uh, first of all, I noticed in the very first, um, uh, slide that you showed, it described the use as a temporary use. But I noticed that there's, um, there's nothing in the resolution or the conditions that condition the project to be a temporary use. So, um, what's, how is, what's the lifespan of the, the project envisioned to be?
Uh, yes, so this project isn't actually designed as a temporary project. We are considering it as a permanent facility. Uh, the applicant's proposal identifies it as a temporary use for the site until a more, um, robust project is negotiated for the project sites. Uh, according to our downtown concept plan, this location was envisioned for a parking, um, parking garage as well as a transit center. So a lot of negotiations that go into that, and right now there's not a, there's no concrete direction on how long that might take. And so this project is envisioned to, uh, utilize the vacant sites until those negotiations and projects are further refined.
So it's being considered though, or approved as a, as a permanent use, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm curious, um, if there was, um, specific discussion at the A R C, at the Architectural Review Commission about um, compatibility with the neighborhood in, in terms of design, about the ma- the metal materials and about articulation. Do you recall if there was a discussion about that and in any detail?
Uh, yes, that's a, those are all the focuses of the A R C, uh, typically reviews. And so it did provide some guidance about some concerns about some materials specifically on the parapets. Uh, but ultimately, they, they did not recommend any changes to the project and the project board was in recommendation as this, the planning commission. Other than that, there was, uh, discussions, discussions, it also didn't include consideration of the neighborhood character. Um, but downtown is, is an eclectic design, and so the, the materials were not identified as compatible with the neighborhood.
Okay, and, um, finally, um, there, I, I did see a sign program proposed by the applicant, uh, but I didn't see the sign program incorporated into the resolution or the conditions. I saw a condition about, uh, that, that the signs need to comply with the sign regulations, but I didn't see anything about the, the actual sign program being required is, um, is, did I miss that? Or, uh, or is it not part of the approval?
Uh, well, there's no required findings for the sign program. Um, as for the conditions, it's, uh, if the signs comply with what is presented in the package of the developer review, and those will be able to carry forward. There's any changes to the, um, the sign program, then it'd be re-reviewed or through modification process. Uh, so there's, um, the specific, uh, conditions were identified as necessary for the project, but there's some suggestions the commission has, I'd be happy to hear them.
So I, I just want to understand, so are you saying that, um, the sign program is, uh, being approved uh, by virtue of being part of the, uh, project plans that the commission is looking at tonight?
Yes.
So if, if the commission approves the project, we would be approving the sign program in effect as, as part of that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have at this time.
Are there other questions from commissioners? Steve?
Uh, thank you very much. Just a couple of site questions. First of all, so they plan to plant lawn in the area that's green exhibited in the, uh, site plan.
Let's see, I'm gonna pull up the map real quick so make sure we're talking.
Thank you, no problem, yeah.
Okay, so you're referring to this, uh, this area here in the center?
Yeah, it says landscape area, yeah.
Okay, yes, applicant, uh, hasn't provided details of what specific, uh, planting they're going to do that location, so you can certainly ask that question when, after their presentation.
Okay. And then the other minor question I had is, as you, I visited the site, as you turn into the proposed parking lot, there's no driveway, so need to put in the driveway and move a tree over. But then there's the new, uh, bike lanes with a hard curb in the middle of the road. So they're gonna need to actually change that, and are they aware of that? It looks like it's pretty major work out there.
Yes, we, we are, we are aware that, and applicant team is aware that that's gonna be a requirement that they're gonna need to address.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, cause anyway, those are my only two questions. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, well then, let's, uh, move to the applicant presentation if the applicant is presenting.
Chair, I've just promoted, uh, members of the applicant team. They should be coming onto the screen in moments.
Good evening, commissioners. Can, can everybody hear and see me all right?
Yes.
You actually don't need to see me. It might be better if you didn't, but I was just wondering.
No, we can't avoid it.
I want to see, Kyle, do you have our package as well to present, or is that, uh, somebody else?
Uh, I didn't receive any separate, uh, presentation from your team, so I just have the project plans here, which I, so.
That's all, that's all I need. That's all I need. Um, so specifically, uh, maybe we could, we could start with just the bird's eye. That'd be, that'd be sort of a great starting point. Commissioners, we're, we're really excited to, to show you this project tonight. It's been.
Sorry, could you, could you introduce yourself real quickly? We've got a.
Absolutely, absolutely, commissioners. Thank you, thank you. Um, again, we're excited. My name is Scott Martin. I'm a principal and, and architect with R R M Design Group. I've got the project architect Kyle Murray with me tonight, um, also from R R M. And then also the applicant, Paul Tompkins, is here with us for, for any specific questions related to that. So, um, we, we're here, we can answer any questions as you have them. Uh, beyond that, we just, I, I already hear a couple of questions being, being tossed around, and, and we'd love an opportunity to sort of tell you how we got here, um, where we're coming from and, and what we think is gonna be a really special project. So, um, with that, um, I, I, we prepared this slide to actually show some of, uh, as the commissioner was asking, show some of the compatibility challenges with, with this area. Um, you know, I will tell you, this is not the first time I've designed a project on this site. Um, it's by far the least intense I've ever designed. Um, but what it isn't, is an empty parking lot that sat there for a decade now, almost. So, um, I'm really excited about, um, what, what some people are calling a temporary use. Even though these are all permanent structures, I think this is gonna be such a great hit, it may never go away. Um, but there is a downtown vision plan. In fact, that's a good point. There's downtown vision plan, there's, um, a downtown core from a zoning standpoint, very Euclidean. Um, and then there's the, the greater downtown, um, that is spoke about in the general plan and others. And, and this crosses some lines. At, at one point, it is in the downtown, and at one point, it isn't, depending on which planning document you're looking at. Um, for us, this is sort of the transitional zone of downtown, heading up towards Upper Monterey um, and campus and, and other areas. Um, but it, it is not in the core. Yeah, just Santa Rosa Street that denotes that, and we're just outside of that. Um, as such, many sites just out of the core have struggled to develop. And I think that's part of the, while the downtown vision plan really looks forward to this being a transit hub, looking at potentially a parking structure and other things here. Um, the, the proper zoning incentives just aren't there yet to, to make a project of that size and scale happen. So what I think the applicant has done is come up with something very unique and, and very visionary here, which is a great current use, a great current project. But the idea is still that one day, if the better project was feasible and allowable and the city aligned with the applicant and everything else, is that they could be unbolted and, and a new project could happen, just like, just like anyone. But a little easier to dismantle. Um, we're excited, though, and we want to focus on this tonight. This, like I said, right now, is just an empty site, just, just a parking lot with one, uh, two old buildings on it. We're gonna demolish one and save the one that you see in the, in the upper portion of, of your slide here. Um, you can see there's actually a building on the back side. There's a great little coffee place, um, and it's got old roll-up doors, one scale. Um, because of a little bit of grade change, we're actually almost directly in line with it, with, with the height of our project. So from a scale size, we're, we're, we're very appropriate. Um, for, for at least the, uh, surrounding context, uh, directly adjacent sites, that is. Um, we, we are providing a little bit of parking, not what meets the requirements. But again, if I was a block away, my parking requirements would be zero. So this is really much more focused on a, a place where we see people having the opportunity to walk and bike, um, taking advantage of the existing transit that's already along Monterey Street and, uh, established in downtown. And really starting to become sort of a, a core and a focus for, for this side of town. A, a draw that, that may not offer exactly the, the bar scene and other scenes that you see downtown. I see this more as somewhere where I could take my wife and ten-year-old, and he can get an ice cream, and we can sit down for dinner and, and ha- have a really great gathering spot. So I'm really excited about that. There are some examples throughout the state where, where these, uh, shipping container gardens have really taken off and be, become a, a wonderful site, a wonderful place. And that, that's what we envision this. It really capitalized on San Luis Obispo's climate and its outdoor space, the ability to provide that. So we're, we're looking forward to those opportunities. All the public spaces outside of the containers that can, um, except for the restrooms. The containers themselves are primary, you primarily use for either food service or food prep. Um, they are a hundred percent permanent to code real buildings, though. We want to make sure that's stressed. We're not, we're not asking for a temporary building permit of any sort. These will all be a hundred percent to code, as well will the landscape. Kyle, if you could go down two, three slides to the, um, site plan. Um, it was great. A commissioner already picked up on this, uh, the landscape area. You know, we are, we are, um, dealing with some permeability, so while it is envisioned that that is not lawn, that it will be turf, still allowing some water to infiltrate in. We are doing some new, uh, tree work along the street where we've been talking to engineering and are aware of the conditions and, and, uh, well abreast of that. Looking forward to working with, uh, the Public Works Director to make, make sure all of that works. We are providing mainly E V-ready or E V-capable parking spaces and, and excess of bike parking, because we really do think this is an opportunity, whether it's for, for a campus student on their way back up from downtown, or a family to bike from the adjacent area. We, we really think that this is more than a, a drive to and sit. It is part of your downtown experience. And, and we'd love to capitalize on that. So there is, there is, um, you know, we're, we're working with staff for a full landscape plan as we come in with permits, but, uh, the concept there is, is to allow some permeability and some outdoor space. Kyle, if you just go to the color and material board, it was brought up and it was a discussion point at, uh, A R C. Um, we went back and forth, and I think we, we've done this. I think that this is going to, it, it's fun, it's eclectic, it's different than a lot of other brick storefronts that you will see in downtown San Luis Obispo. And I go back to saying, well, it's just outside of downtown. So, so maybe that's appropriate, and, and we had a, we had a healthy dialogue with A R C. And in, in the end, they, uh, concurred that we should approve the project based on these colors um, supplied, and, and they're contrived for, they're, they're derived from, um, tr- true use of the building itself, a shipping container sort of motif with, uh, colors found there. Um, that, these are not overly ornate buildings, and we think that's okay. We think the, the use and the activity and the physical people and the emphasis on outdoor space is really what's gonna be the draw, not an overly articulated building. So it's kind of taking some of the architecture that we've tried so hard for years and flipping it inside out and saying, come to our outdoor space and look at architecture. So we're, we're really excited about it. It is unique, it is different. But we think that, that's what makes it so fun. Um, with that, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions. Um, I hope I've at least addressed some of them along the way. And like I said, I've also got, uh, Paul, uh, the applicant here um, and my project architect, if, if you have any questions. So thank you so much for the opportunity. We're really looking forward to this.
So commissioners, do we have questions of the applicant? Um, Steve, you had one originally?
I, I don't have a question.
At this point, so you understand they're working on the parking lot and, uh.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'll make one comment since, since I, since I have the floor, um. One thing I think that it, it'll feel like, um, is the Creamery. I've been to the Creamery several times recently. And I'll, even though there are permanent building or not containers, it's got, I think it might have the same feel as that in the summer night. Creamery is really a, a nice place to hang out. Anyway, that was my only comment.
Commissioner, that's a great comment, and that is one of our inspirations. We were hoping for a little even more family-friendly. Uh, that's part of the landscape concept there and a little more permeable, but absolutely, I think that, that new building of the Creamery is very similar.
Emma?
Um, yeah, yeah, I, I, it's really an interesting design and, um, the, the grill on top is basically to shield, uh, H, HVAC equipment, correct? It's.
Yeah, and, and some cooking ventilation. There, there are some, uh, containers available for cooking, much like you'd see on top of a food truck. Although because they are permanent buildings, we provided a screen. It has to let some air in. Again, this was a dialogue we had with A R C. We think we've met all the, the requirements for both the community-wide design guidelines and, and, um, you know, what we're gonna need for building code as well.
And, and, yeah, that, that looks good. It, it fits, I think, to have that. Um, you're also thinking about murals on the sides of these. I, is that what I'm reading in the drawings?
That, that was, that, that was part of the concept. Either, you know, I think, I think one of the commissioners already alluded to it, and we're not gonna hide from it. These are boxes, right? Um, and, uh, at times that can be maybe a little harsh. So we, we did allude to both murals and some, some vegetation. You know, it's really an internalized project, and the vendors want to be able to, 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 uh, service in, interior to the project. So, um, the quote-unquote backside that becomes a little bit more public interface, that's where we focus some of our signage for the project, landscape area, and, and even added some areas for vines to grow up the containers as well, and then the idea of a mural as well.
I, I guess I have one more question, Mr. If, um, and I think this is more for Mr. Tompkins than, uh, you, Scott. That is, um, uh, you, you know, that, that this activity is picking up on Monterey. And, um, I do see lots of people coming by bikes and so on to the coffee shops that are sort of very close to this site. Uh, but I was just wondering, you indicate food services all around the court, but what happens if the, it doesn't work at the scale? What, what are your plans if, you know, you don't have food service providers? Who would come in?
Yeah, what I can primarily say to that is we've, we've begun our initial tenant negotiations. We haven't signed any leases. But our, our initial negotiations have been highly positive with local vendors. We've talked to over fifteen so far, who are just food vendors looking at the location. Uh, so I'm, I'm highly confident we will be able to lease up and operate it with food vendors. And then I believe we have potentially beer tasting and cider tasting and maybe wine tasting as well that we'll have on site. But it will primarily a food location, but there will be beer, wine, and kind of family-friendly outdoor drinking to go along with the food. But we, we are confident so far with leasing.
I, I, I ask because, you know, this is a very specific kind of design. It's for, it's for retail food vending. And so, uh, one, one just worries if it doesn't take off, who, you know, what you might wanna be putting there.
Yeah, and we've, we've done what we can to make it as simple as possible, to give vendors as much of a chance of success as possible. The common area will be maintained by shared third-party maintenance. So from their side, really be cooking and serving their food within their container to their customers outside. So it opens our pool, who can potentially operate, to a significantly wider pool than a normal restaurant. And that could be even existing restaurants that have a specialty item that they'd like to serve at a higher rate. They can come in, or someone who's a new restaurateur in the local area can start a restaurant like this, much simpler, much more simple, excuse me, than a typical restaurant. So that's our idea. We, we did think about it, and we did try to do what we could to open that pool as much as possible, so we have significant options of what could go there.
I see. So startups could also be, it, it might be affordable for startup operation.
Yeah, yeah, I, I act, you know, portions of this, we have, we have to go through the leasing, it's a whole process. But portion of this could potentially serve as a small restaurant-facing, retail-facing incubator within, within the area of downtown Slow. Um, we have to look, and if you get a good fit, obviously you want. We have to look and if you get a good fit, obviously you want that tenant there, but there's potential for new restaurants coming in there, proving their concept and going to a more permanent place elsewhere or maintaining both, but it is, it is exactly that.
Thank you. I I have no more questions.
Are there others with questions? Emily?
Hi, yeah. Am I understanding that the only access for people coming in is on Higera Street, or is that also an access point on Toro?
Okay, it's Scott.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I think I was muted. I apologize. No, there is not access on Toro. There there is primarily public access along Higera Street. That is just to help with some of the control. There is some service access and staff access off of the parking lot that you can see on that side.
But that would only, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to.
Again, emergency exiting requirements and things like that through the through the staff access, but primarily the entry to the project will be there along Higera Street.
So everybody will be funneled in who's coming just to to visit the food vendors will come in through that Higera entrance. Okay.
Yes.
And then will that be something that will be gated off when outside of set hours? Are you envisioning that this is more of an afternoon evening type of location or is it potentially something that could do earlier service? I don't know how far you are into thinking about that.
There are, there are some limitations for for hours of use, but more more than anything right now, it's envisioned currently as primarily afternoon and evening. If there was a coffee and bakery demand, maybe a morning use, but we're, you know, we're also monitoring our parking demand as well. It is, the idea is yes, absolutely, that you could close it off at night and keep non-desired public out of there.
Then visually, it looked like you have six foot fencing in some areas, but I couldn't quite tell if that's wrapping around the entire exterior or if that's.
The idea was to use the containers themselves as a lot of the fence, as they're eight foot tall, that they would act primarily as the visual or physical barrier. And then just to sort of connect the dots or fill in the spaces in between, there would be that six foot fencing.
And and that six foot fencing in the front, is that designed to be somewhat transparent? It looked on your your vision drawing that that was something that where people could kind of see what was happening inside of there.
Hundred percent. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, no one else saw a jump in and maybe.
I did have a.
Oh, good. Oh, Mike, sorry. And you have your hand up right now. I'm sorry. I see it now. It looks like a yellow flower.
There is a a community design guideline that talks to about compatibility with surrounding buildings. With regard to design and and a number of factors, I was wondering if you could, Mr. Martin, just try to convince me about how how this project is compatible with surrounding buildings with regard to the design theme, the textures and the materials, because in looking at all the buildings around this side, I I'm having difficulty finding compatibility with those aspects of design.
Sure, sure. Commissioner, welcome. I think it's, I think it's a great conversation to have. And I think it is yet another project that that starts to really question the subjectivity of compatibility and what that means. So when we had this discussion at A R C, we talked about the the scale and the materials of the building right next door. As I said, right next door is a block building. One of our buildings is block. That block building has roll up door, roll up metal and glass doors, very similar in a material compatibility from what we are looking at with with the shipping containers. And and again, from a, from a sort of monochromatic sort of look at a building. I I think these are a series of buildings. Each building is colored one color. It is not dark gunmetal black. It is not brick red. It is something in between and 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 I just want to, I want to be very cautious here and say this the right way, but I don't want to dilute the quality of San Luis Obispo architecture by trying to mimic everything we do have. I don't think compatibility means matching. I think compatibility means providing a use and a place that will work within a neighborhood. And and I think whether you look at the new Bank of America building, whether you look at the old Bank of America building, the brownstones behind me, Petra right next door, which has a wide variety of materials, colors and uses. We we actually do think that is the urban fabric that allows this kind of project to happen.
Okay, and one, one additional question. There is another community design guideline for the downtown that talks about finished materials. And maybe this is a question that's better for staff, but it it says pretty clearly that corrugated metal is is considered inappropriate downtown. And this is corrugated. Well, it says corrugated sheet metal. This is corrugated metal. Do you have a a response to that? Or maybe staff? I don't, maybe it's for staff.
Yes, so that section, which is chapter four of the design guidelines is referring to the downtown. As Scott Martin had mentioned earlier, there are several boundaries of downtown. And so we applied chapter four to the C D zone than the downtown core. So this was identified as a discussion point in the A R C staff reports regarding materials and neighborhood compatibility. And so we were looking for guidance from the A R C if there was concerns related to neighborhood compatibility or the materials. And so they did not identify any concerns. And they did recommend approval of projects. So in the conversation of the applicability of chapter four of the design guidelines, they agreed to staff's assessment of its capability.
Okay, well, so you're saying that the staff is interpreting the community design guidelines downtown guidelines to mean the the C D zone? Is is that what you said? Okay, so but when I look, when I look at the land use element, there's a map in the land use element. It's a figure. I forget what figure it is for, figure four, I think, in the land use element. And it shows this area as part of the downtown planning area and downtown core. I think it used the word downtown core. So so it's kind of, I guess you can pick what you want. But so staff is is not applying the downtown design guidelines to this area then.
Correct. I I worked on the neighboring project, which is the Bank of America redevelopment. And then Rachel Cohen also worked on the neighboring project to that. And this is consistent with the reviews as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all my questions, Chair Jorgensen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Let me, I want to kind of get back to some of the concerns that and questions that Emily had raised, because I'd had some similar concerns. In in a way, I think it is about the kind of management of the facility. And so maybe for Mr. Tompkins, I'd I'd ask you're going to have, I I think I heard you say you have a third party maintaining the, I assume the restrooms, the grounds, any gates that need to be locked or anything like that, or will there be somebody present all the time?
Yeah, there will be a third party, either one, two employees, depending on the time of day, at all times of operations, as well as doing opening and closing of the common area.
I see. Sounds like a good idea. And speaking of the of the fencing and the views in and for that amount of the access, I think one of the things that's really exciting about this project is it has the potential, I think, to kind of thicken, if you will, the walk from Cal Poly to downtown and vice versa. And so making the only access at the corner at the corner of Toro and Higera makes that a little harder. And yet it sounds like from a management point of view, you want to have everyone come in and want entrance that can be I suppose controlled would be the word. Is that, am I right about that?
Correct. From a management standpoint, we're also hoping for the grand entrance of walking into kind of a new area when you walk in there. But the primary reason is down Toro, there's a retaining wall that would create entrance on that side, really just make it impractical.
On 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 the whole Toro side?
Yeah, it starts right at the corner and just works its way down.
Yeah, yeah. So back to your response to Emily, there'll be there'll be visual cues and and some transparency to allow people at least to see there's something in there. You just have to walk further to go see it. Okay. That sounds good. Good. Those were my questions. So with that, not seeing any more questions, let's move to the, to any public comment we have. Kevin, do we have any public comment on this item? I should also say I've seen at least six letters from the public today speaking on this item.
Chair, I'll go ahead and walk through or talk through the instructions. For anybody that's in the attendee audience, if you would like to speak on this item, this is your chance now. You just need to raise your hand. I will recognize you and promote you to a panelist where you can turn on your audio and video and share your comments with the commission. And we'll give you another few seconds to do so. And Chair, just to note, I double checked and there is no additional emails that have come in during the meeting. Just as a reference to the emails you received earlier. And there you go. Back to you. Nobody in the attendee list has raised their hand.
Okay, well, then I'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Somebody want to jump in? Emma?
Yeah, I would, you know. Over the years, we've kept trying to have Monterey be an extension of the three story, more dense downtown. I mean, that was always the agenda and we would push people with projects. I remember particularly when we had the corner of Santa Rosa and Monterey and the building initially came in much higher and we wanted more and it just none of it seemed to work from a development point of view. And I mean, I fully respect the calculations that the development community puts into these things. So over the years, I'm sort of getting perhaps resigned is the wrong word, but just accepting of the fact that market conditions don't seem to warrant more dense, more dense, higher development up Monterey for for right now. And I guess staff has said this is permanent. But I'm kind of comforted by the fact that it is containers because, you know, there cases in Europe, for instance, where something can be like this, can be used for like ten, fifteen, sometime twenty years and then situation changes and those containers move to another site. Oftentimes it's for affordable housing or, you know, particular needs of housing, but the containers really can shift somewhere. So I, although I'm a little concerned about this, I really like the design. I think there's a buzz on that part of the street with young folks. I've been at the coffee shops opposite and they are really hopping. There's lots of people there. So they see, they seem to be filling the need. And so I I support this project. Even though the sort of the the long range planning side of me is concerned that we're not getting the growth of the downtown that we were hoping for. And the the kind of downtown that we were hoping for. Because we were envisioning small units on top of commercial on the ground and so on up Monterey to create some sort of alternative housing type. So I'm just, I guess I'm just making a statement rather than voicing objections, but sort of reflecting on the fact that I support this because I don't think other projects which we thought we would like to see happen have been successfully brought forth and approved.
Would you like to move the the motion to get this, get this started?
Yeah, I think I would. I'd like to move the motion to approve this project with the not amendments, but conditions as articulated by staff.
So while we're at it, is there a second? Just for purposes of discussion.
I'll second it. Steve Conley second it.
Okay. And Steve, did you want to say anything about it right now? We all want to say something, I imagine.
No, I I I like the project. I think it's a good transition, like we said, and I think it's a neat project. When I visited the site, I think it used to be a car lot that center building they're going to demo. Very building with the windows looking down. That's a pretty neat building, but I really can't see any way it can be tied in with the project. It doesn't fit, but it is kind of a neat old, it's the total car lot building. But anyway. So I I second it. I totally support the project.
Thank you. Others have comments or concerns, questions? Michael, Mike, sorry. I see that flower again. You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I think the proposed restaurants and the gathering area are definitely consistent with general plan policies and the land use element. I think they would be a good addition to the neighborhood and contribute to the walkability of the area. I also recognize that the the reuse of shipping containers is is it's a creative design and I'm not totally convinced about the the consistency with all the design guidelines, but I'm a little concerned there. But I'm a little bit comforted at the same time that maybe this won't be a temporary use and that the that the containers can be unbolted and and used for another purpose at some point. So maybe the fact that it might not be, you know, permanent helps, but all in all, I'm going to vote in favor of it, even with some reservations about the meeting the design guidelines. Not that I don't think it's a, it's kind of a cool design. It's creative. And the colors are, I'm fine with the colors. It's just just looking at the design guidelines, I'm having a little bit of trouble, but so I'm not totally convinced, but I'm going to vote for it anyway.
Thank you. Emily?
Yeah, having spent some time at the site this week, I was really hoping that there would be a way to integrate more access points, just because it does feel kind of somewhat removed from the corridors that a lot of folks would be coming from the one entrance point that's there and just to create a sense of flow and and community to have people coming in from different sides. But I understand the practicalities of that. On a personal level, I'm excited for the project. I think it's really neat. I've been to projects like this before and they've become really awesome neighborhood hubs. But yeah, thank you.
I think I'd like to add that to me, this is kind of a I don't know if you'd call it a proof of concept project, but it, I I think we're all trying to demonstrate the viability of the North Monterey area. And part of that is, can we draw people to it? And and can we draw families and students as well? And and I think that doesn't automatically all of a sudden mean, gee, everybody's going to want to build, but it does allow us to understand if this is an attractive area to people, that means people are going to want to live there as well in that, in this general area. So this seems like a very smart step to test out these these matters and try to figure out exactly following along the lines that Hema raised in terms of the history and how hard it has been to get the kind of development. we've imagined just should fit there, it's in the plans, where is it, come on? Uh, the reality is, we've gotta see people, uh, using these spaces, I think, and I think this is a great way to start. So, given that bigger purpose from my point of view, I, I, um, can understand the concerns, for instance, that Mike Wilkman has raised around the total consistency, but, uh, I think there's a bigger purpose here. And I, I, I think it's really worth a try on our part to, uh, find a way to help to succeed. So, that's my two bits. Uh, any other comments? Give you, sure, somebody ought to be up there rebutting me for one thing. But if not, I think we're ready to vote, uh, I don't see any hands raised, uh, Kevin, would you call a roll on this motion?
Commissioner Dondekar?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkman?
Yes.
Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
Motion passes with, uh, Commissioner Hopkins recused and Vice Chair Quincy absent.
Thank you very much, and thank you, uh, applicants and presenters, appreciate that, that's very helpful. So, um, we finished that and we're ready to, uh, to move on to, um, staffery updates and agenda forecasts.
Right, well, thanks Chair Jorgensen, I think I'm gonna turn this over to Kevin for a quick update on, uh, virtual meetings and when we're gonna come back in person, so Kevin, I'll, I'll send it over to you.
Okay, sure, thank you. Um, so I, I was asked to just kind of give a rundown of the, the current state of things, because you know, with COVID, everything is kind of a moving target, right? As you may know, council, uh, we turned on my video, so you're not looking at a black screen. Council is going back to in-person meetings, starting with their March fifteenth, uh, meeting. And so they've essentially, you know, put in, put their stamp of approval on the advisory bodies going back to in-person, um, following that. So, uh, technically you would be able to go back to in-person for your, uh, scheduled second meeting during March. Um, but the direction that we've gotten here in administration is that, you know, it's, it's not, that's not the hard, fast, you must do it. That is really pushed to, being pushed till April, and we've had a request, um, for staffing purposes that we go ahead and recommend that the planning commission not go back to in-person until the April meetings. And, um, then, once we go back to in-person, you know, we're gonna be watching the, the COVID rates the whole time. This is all based on the projections that the, the trend continues down and that it is in fact, you know, uh, hospitalization rates are, are down and, um, um, any, any in-person meetings, you know, we're gonna follow the, the governor's, uh, continued guidance on unvaccinated individuals attending indoor, uh, gatherings are going to be asked to mask. Um, and of course, anybody who then is vaccinated can make a choice to mask, including the commissioners. And since you're going to be, uh, you know, essentially required to come to a public meeting in person, the city will provide at your request, um, K N ninety-fives or N ninety-five mask if you would, if you desire them. And then, um, there's been questions and discussion about hybrid meetings, and this is, the hybrid meeting is, you know, uh, doing in-person plus what we're doing now. And while we have, um, we're not going to go to those immediately, um, it's, you know, reading the tea leaves, it's probably something that, that, you know, the state may even mandate for, you know, put into law that is something that is required in the future, because it does allow access for more of the community. We have, um, an approved budget, but there is, there is some, you know, some technical hurdles, some equipment to purchase to be able to allow us to conduct hybrid meetings, so we won't be going to those immediately. The general timeline is by June summer. We just don't have a specific time, a timeline, and then, um, the last thing I just wanted to comment on is that, you know, the governor at any time, you know, we don't know, could lift the state of emergency. If, if and when the governor lifts the state of emergency, then we are absolutely going to be going to in-person meetings, because, uh, the type of meeting we have, are having right now is only allowed under the state of emergency. And, and so, of course, we would go back to in-person Brown Act meeting rules. And there you go, that's kind of what I have, if you have any questions, let me know, and maybe Tyler can jump in if he's got more comments he'd like to share.
I don't think I have any extra comments, I think that was a good overview, um, but I'd happy to hear the commissioners have any comments about that.
Yeah. Jump in, commissioners.
If you don't have anything to say, I'm just gonna take that as I did a fantastic job of giving you a summary, and you have no questions.
You did do that, that's for sure.
And it could change at any moment.
Yes. I mean, um, like other advisory bodies, I think we've become about as resilient as we can be, and, um, I just imagine that'll continue, so somehow I suspect this won't be the last word. Uh, given how much things have gone back and forth and we just make it work. I've gotten, um, I'm certainly ready to leave Zoom, but it is nice having the whole, the whole, um, agenda up on the screen in front of me, and I just, um, these days I've given away my small laptops to kids and grandkids, and I'm not sitting with an easy way to bring up the whole, um, agenda, especially when it's a long agenda, um, uh, in front of me in, in person, so I've gotta kind of decide whether I've gotta go, wanna go back to printing and all that, that encompasses or not, we'll just kind of see how it plays out, I guess. Or I'll just memorize the agenda, read it very, like, chapter and verse, wow, everybody, before I fall asleep. Uh, from spending so much time on it. Any comments on any part of this, um, or do, or is there any concern about, um, starting in April?
Um, I don't have any comment on what was discussed, and I certainly look forward to getting back together in person meetings. Um, all I have to say is the next meeting in, uh, March, I will not be here at that meeting, I'll be out of the country, so I'll be, I'll be absent the next meeting.
Well, good news, there is gonna be no next meeting.
Oh.
And, and we're going with you.
Come on, let's go.
Yeah, the, the, so I can move on, I guess, at this point, I guess, to the kind of forecast for March, so, uh, the March ninth meeting, we don't have any items that are ready for planning commission, so that meeting is canceled. And so the next regular meeting will be March twenty-third. That one does have several, uh, items on it, it has that residential care facility at fifty-five Broad that I've talked about, um, last couple of meetings. It also has, uh, new commercial building off of Empressa. Thirty-four ninety Empressa, it's about sixteen, seventeen thousand square foot building there, coming to you from a recommendation from the A R C. And then lastly, we have the general plan annual report, so this is a presentation from staff that provides kind of an overview of our, um, you know, policies, general plan policy implementation, things that are happening on the development spectrum, public safety, public works, utilities, it kind of covers all the main departments. So we will be doing, planning on some time for a presentation and some kind of question and answer time for that item as well. And then moving out as, uh, we discuss, so I think the plan right now would be the, uh, first meeting in April, which is the thirteenth, would be when we would, um, plan to be back in the chambers.
April thirteenth, okay.
So let me know if you have any questions about that, I, um, I anticipate we will have a meeting on the thirteenth, but, um, I will update you on the twenty-third on kind of status of how that, how that works.
Any questions? Well, uh, then I think, uh, we now know that the regular, next regular meeting of the planning commission will be March twenty-third. March ninth meeting will be canceled. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody, good to see you.
Rain for rain.
Have a good night.
Miracle march.
Yeah, there we go, we need it. Take care.